Visit our low-cost Microchip Clinic and in just about 10 minutes, get that Microchip implanted and you're good to go. Once your pet is Microchipped, or if they already are, make sure to keep all of your contact information updated, like your phone number, your address, and your email address, and make sure it's updated with your veterinarian as well. Remember, one simple Microchip can get your lost pet back to your home and make sure it's safe with you and your family. For more information on Microchipping or Microchip appointments, visit mypasco.net/pas.
Go Pasco and Pasco County Libraries are perfect partners, perfect place to buy your bus pass. I'm very excited to introduce our newest library where you could buy bus passes. We listened to your requests and you can now buy your bus passes at the downtown New Port Ritchie Library.
It's very convenient to come from where I live to the library to pick up a bus pass. Before I would have to use two buses and now I can use one.
The New Port Ritchie Public Library acts as an information hub to the entire West Pasco community. We are thrilled to be able to offer the Go Pasco Bus Passes as an additional service for our community.
The bus passes that you could buy at the downtown New Port Ritchie Library are 31-day regular and reduced and the 20 ride. And don't forget, you can get your day passes on the bus. The partnership between Go Pasco and the New Port Ritchie Library Downtown is a great, great partnership. We've wanted this for many years.
I just love Go Pasco.
Find your way to Pasco County Libraries with Go Pasco at GoPasco.com.
My name is Niktarios Pitos and I'm the Planning Development Department Director. So have you ever wondered what is happening over on the corner of such and such a road by your house? Or you're driving down a certain street and you see some activity, bulldozers perhaps, or houses being built, or some construction happening of some sort or another? Now you can actually find that information in real time on your mobile device because the project pipeline is accessible. You can actually now look and see, I'm at the corner of such and such a street, what is going on? I can look down into the iPhone, into the database there and identify exactly what that project is. And now you've got an idea for what's going to be built in your community.
When I spoke to the officials here, they were unseen before I had arrived. They indicated that at least the winds were clocked at 60 miles an hour that it came through. Some of the damage that had occurred, it ripped the roof right off the entire facility, screws and all, just ripped it out, destroyed the carports, any attachments, sheds, snap trees. So there was substantial damage for 60 mile an hour wind. So this one here was rather close. As you could see, it removed it, it removed the entire roofing system but left the insulation. And that's what saved his structure actually, from getting substantial damage. They have a tarp now to secure it. The insulation, as I indicated, stayed intact, but the remainder of the roof and carport has been placed in the backyard.
And I walked out, tried to open the sunroom door and the rain was going this way. So I shut the sunroom door, stepped back a few feet and it went pop, one big boom. That was it.
We realize that the winds may pick up tomorrow, so we'll be back out here again, checking the structures again to make sure everybody's safe. But this one here, we'll keep an eye on just to make sure it's, it's safe for the occupants to be inside.
If you have pets, you're ultimately responsible for them, even during a disaster. Just adding a few items to your own go-kit will ensure you and your pet have everything you need to make it through any disaster. Each of your pets should have their own carrier with medical records, and a two-week supply of food, water, and medication. Even pet-friendly hotels and shelters will want to see proof of your pet's shots. Ask your vet for a copy of your pet's records, including any of their disease results. Be sure to include proof of ownership for your pets, like a recent photo of you with your pet. Include any special instructions for anyone else who might be taking care of your pets. Don't forget to bring waste bags or a litter box, litter, and a scoop along with cleaning supplies. Having all the items you and your pets need ready to go at a moment's notice can make a big difference in how quickly you're able to react to a disaster, whether you end up staying at home, at a pet-friendly shelter, or evacuating. Use a list of items that can be found in the Pasco County Disaster Guide on our website, mypasco.net, or in the My Pasco app to help you put together a pet-inclusive go-bag.
When I read that and everything, I'm not sure I buy the whole story of, I thought I was voting for this. It's an 18-page bill. It's not like it was an 18,000-page bill. I think it was written by very clever lawyers who knew exactly what they were putting in that law.
Oh, I know. There's no question. Somebody...
Yeah, absolutely.
The question though is...
Originally, they won the Big South County Design...
I'm not...
I mean, I like me far less than someone else. Do you think there was undisclosed that you're the top...
Didn't have it in the...
Well, I don't... Right, but I'm just not buying. I didn't know what was in the bill. I co-sponsored.
We've heard chat tonight. Sponsor, sponsor has a little less than argument. That's right.
Yeah, that's valid. Valid argument. Correctible point.
Hi, just let us know when you're ready. Okay?
You know, I understand stand-up when they hand you a 2,000-page budget bill and yeah, I didn't know that we were, you know, giving money to test feed frogs or whatever. I get that.
It gets buried in the pork.
An 18-page bill.
You can scan through that.
And it's only 18 pages because it's a striking underline version. If it weren't a striking underline version, it wouldn't be 3,000. Exactly.
Heard the big events tonight, Bill?
Yes, indeed, yes.
I didn't get an invite. What's going on with that? Yeah, I got stuff tonight anyway, but... That's, that's cool. So this is, how many years of, that's been going on? A long time? Cool. I know you've bounced around to different places, but back at Saddle Brook. Cool. 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 So renovations have, a lot of them have been completed then?
I hope so.
Find out shortly.
Well, alright then. Alright then, cool. Cool, cool.
That's fine.
Chuck coming in for the regular meeting, or is he...
He doesn't think he's gonna make it. He has a 1 o'clock appointment this afternoon, so I don't think he's gonna make it. Okay, good morning. Call to order the Planning Commission Workshop of September 4th, 2025. We can please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we call the roll, please?
Chairman Charles Gray, Mr. Chris Appul.
Here.
Mr. John Moody.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Monks.
Here.
Mr. Derek Potles.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
Last year in the country, Dr. Aron.
Here.
Okay, just a quick reminder, if you've got any electronic devices, please put them in a silence position, silent position, so they do not disturb the presentation. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Niktarios Pitos, Planning Development Economic Growth Department. Today's local planning agency comprehensive plan update session will focus on the Pasco 2050 chapter, Pasco Works, which is the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. This chapter, like all the other chapters of the comprehensive plan, has been worked on by numerous industry-related stakeholders, the county attorney's office, the county and county departments, including in this case by us, the Planning Development Economic Growth Department, and the Pasco Economic Development Council, which was a significant participant and contributor to the development of the chapter. In addition to this, the Planning Development Economic Growth Department facilitated the reviews for P E D C and industry-related stakeholders in order to capture their input and facilitate the development of the draft. Moreover, it bears noting, like before, that we received significant community stakeholder feedback on the question of economic development needs within the county through the various public comments and surveys via Pasco 2050, via the Pasco 2050 Project website, as well as other surveys I have to do with economic development in the county, as well as the over 10 community workshops and open houses that we have held across the county in the past two years. Today, we're presenting Pasco Works, though like before, our plan is not to go line by line through the chapter, but to present the big ideas for the chapter and provide you all with an overview of the new policies that were added to the proposed comprehensive plan update, and then the other changes that may have occurred. With me today is Hyatt Mizili, the Senior Planner with Planning Services, who is the project manager of the comprehensive plan update. Like before, she's gonna walk us through the chapter overview. You should have with you today materials that include the draft chapter, a redline version of it, the policy change tables that illustrate the various edits that were made in Pasco 2050 as compared against the current comprehensive plan. as compared against the current comprehensive plan's economic development element, and the data and analysis information that support the goals, objectives, and policies of the proposed chapter. If there are any questions or comments, we will be able, we will be available for discussion, as well as our counterparts and partners in the Pasco Economic Development Council we have today with us, Mr. Bill Cronin. And with that, I'll hand the baton over to Hyatt. She'll do the presentation, and then we can get into the discussion.
Thank you. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Good morning, planning commissioners. Hyatt Mizili, Planning Development Economic Growth. Excuse me. And we are back again with another Pasco twenty fifty chapter. If I can just move to the next slide. The down. Thank you. Okay, so you gentlemen have seen the slide before. It's my trusty roadmap of all the eleven chapters in the Pasco twenty fifty comprehensive plan update. This morning, we will look closely at chapter number nine, which is Pasco Works. And Pasco Works is all about economic development. Following the same approach as I did with the previously discussed chapters, I will begin with an overview of the proposed amendments to Pasco Works, and then I will turn it over to you for discussion. With us today, like Terry has mentioned, staff from the Pasco Economic Development Council, Mr. Bill Cronin. Thank you for being with us today. And also, our very own Director of Planning Development Economic Growth, the development, the economic development guru, Mr. David Engel. Okay, so Pasco Works is the new name of the existing economic development element. This chapter is technically not required by chapter one sixty-three of the Florida statutes, but for Pasco County, it plays a crucial role in shaping our long-term economic vision. It provides a strategic framework to guide efforts in business recruitment and retention, workforce development, and infrastructure investment. When it comes to economic development, Pasco County has been stepping up its game. And we're not talking small tweaks. We have been fully transforming into a thriving employment hub. We have been attracting new target businesses and creating more job opportunities with our business-friendly environment and our business incentives. As far as this chapter goes, what has changed in this update? We have streamlined and reorganized the goals, objectives, and policies. We have one goal, eight objectives, one of which is new, and thirty policies, three of them are new as well. We consolidated policies, revised the language of existing policies, updated outdated information, and deleted policies that are no longer applicable. And we also ensured that the outdated or the updated policies are consistent with the findings of the twenty twenty-four Pasco County Economic Growth Programs Strategy Study. So our planning and our economic initiatives are working hand in hand. Next, we have this slide that highlights the new objectives and policies we are proposing in Pasco Works. Policy Works one point one point five Economic Growth Program Strategy Study commits the county to using the study that I just mentioned as a blueprint for enhancing our economic development programs, including incentive structures, infrastructure planning, workforce development, and public-private partnerships. And I just want to note that we have been doing most, if not all, of the recommendations that came from the study. But with this policy, we just want to strengthen and diversify, diversify our economic development programs using recommendations from the study. Policy one point three point five highlights entrepreneurial development. This policy commits the Economic Development Organization, or PASCO A D C in this case, to develop programs that support and foster a pro entrepreneurship and innovation culture in our county all across the sectors. Objective Works one point five is technically not new. The title and the language have been rewritten to reflect the policies under this objective. And the policies under this objective pretty much focus on ensuring that Pasco County land use planning and infrastructure development is directly supporting our economic growth. Then we have Policy Works one point four, one point five point four Identification of Key Industrial Sites Pasco Ready Sites Program. This policy focuses on proactively identifying and evaluating land for industrial development. It also calls out advancing the Pasco Ready Sites Program, which is designed to ensure that key industrial sites and developments are ready, meaning they have the necessary infrastructure, the zoning and permitting conditions in place to attract businesses and industries. Finally, we have Objectives Works one point six. This objective focuses on revitalizing underused and economically distressed areas in our county, as well as attracting investment and enhancing livability through strategic land use and infrastructure improvements. Altogether, these policies, these proposed new policies, as well as existing policies in Pasco Works Chapter, position our county to strengthen the local economy, create a thriving employment hub, and continuing or continue attracting new industries and opportunities. And speaking of opportunities, this slide before you connect the new and updated policies in Pasco Works back to the broader community vision. One of the strongest themes that we consistently heard from our community was the need for more employment opportunities. Here you can see how Pasco Works aligns with that vision. The policies in this chapter focus on things like encouraging entrepreneurship, creating new incentives to attract new businesses and support existing businesses, coordinating state and federal incentives, programs for primary and target industries, and investing in workforce training and infrastructure to prepare our residents for future jobs. These policies and many others in this chapter, as well as in other chapters of the Pasco twenty fifty comprehensive plan, directly point back to what the community told us they want. A thriving local community with more opportunities to live, work, play, and grow right here in Pasco County. And this is Pasco Works in a nutshell. Now it's your turn to put the work in Pasco Works. Let's get the discussion going. Your thoughts, ideas, and feedback are very much welcome, like always.
Chair, can I ask a global question? Before we get into the details of the policies, can somebody explain the move to change everything from P D C to E D O? And then I have a more general question, which is, why do we need to sort of pinpoint who's doing what? In other words, why can't these policies be reformulated just so the county shall do these things? As opposed to the county's doing X, E D O's doing Y? I mean, my, my overall concern here is, and I've had this discussion with Bill in the past, that if we're delegating our duties to the E D O, arguably, it triggers sunshine law, public records issues for P E D C. I'm not, I'd rather handle those delegations of specific duties through agreements as opposed to embedding who's responsible for what in the comp plan. Because I'm, I'm fearful that that's going to potentially implicate, cause P D C to be subject to certain sunshine law and public record requirements that they may not want to be subject to. So, global question is, why can't we just say the county shall do these economic development things without getting into who's doing them?
Plus, responsibilities could change over time, too.
Right, that, that's where, it, it, that's why I think it's kind of a global question, which is, why do we need to continue to say who's doing what?
All right, well, the second question negates the first question on the E D O.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes. If you answer the second question, then maybe we don't need to identify who, what an E D O is. And, and so, maybe you should tackle the second question first.
All right, well, I'm gonna call my colleague up here, Mr. Cronin, because he was very part of the review of this chapter and gave us some good, good points.
Yeah, thank you. And David, as always, thanks for looking after our interest when it comes to things like sunshine and, and how we operate, too. With us as the E D O and concern about sunshine, any of the things that are covered in this particular portion of the plan would be open to sunshine as they normally are. That's not a concern to us. The sunshine piece of where we become competitive are the conversations with the individual companies that we're looking to recruit or working with their businesses. I think it's, you'll find that it's pretty, pretty normal for most of the plans that do include an economic development piece of it, to show what that relationship is. For us, it's important because not just to say, hey, we've got you in print and locking us in as the agency, because it doesn't. By changing it to E D O, we could have another E D O. There are several types of E D Os that could be in the same county. We're, we're considered the primary contact per the state of Florida in our M O U with the state of Florida. But places like Polk County have two and three E D Cs, and only one of them are actually the primary contact that would be listed in that. For us, it helps us, though, because as a five oh one C three, one of the things that we have to do to be a five oh one C three, rather than a five oh one C six, is to do something on behalf of the county. So having that pointed out and, and actually printed in the code is one way that we can show very easily and point to to say, we are doing this as an extension of the county. Thus, that allows us to be a five oh one C three. Where if we weren't doing it for the county, we'd have to be a C six. And a C six, we'd be doing it on behalf of our members instead of the public.
I mean, if, if you're willing to make sure that any, any part of this comp plan where we're delegating that county duty to your organization or to any E D O, which is some organization other than the county, presumably. If you're saying that you're comfortable that that, you're gonna comply with public record sunshine law requirements for that delegation, I guess that cures the concern, but I, I mean, I am sensitive to the fact that sometimes you all don't want to do that.
Not as, not as much as you might think, actually. I mean, I think historically, we were written in, spelled out by name. And I think one of the changes that you'll see through this document is we've gotten rid of a lot of the specific names of organizations to do this or to do that. And to Derek's point, sometimes that might change in the future. We may have, for example, a different state agency. We may have a different workforce agency. We may have another E D O in the future, too. Not that I'm looking to retire anytime soon, but.
I guess that's the, going back to the first question. So is there some other document that, now that we're changing everything to E D O, is there some other document where the county designates P D C as our E D O, at least for now?
Yes, there is. The M O U, which we're, we're gonna consolidate now with the funding agreement with the Economic Development Council, stipulates that the Pasco Economic Development Council is the county's official economic development organization. And that's the term that's used by Florida Commerce. Secondly, on the sunshine provisions, there is a, I'm not an attorney. I'm using Mr. Moody's law degree on this one. But I recall there's a confidentiality provision for economic development that would protect Bill's confidentiality with his clients.
There is. I'm not saying that there, there, but there's constraints to that. And Bill's, well, you know, there's time, there's limited timeframes, there's certain requests that need to be made. There's, it's a fairly narrow exemption to, to implicate it.
That's okay.
I'm talking about all the other general business that P D C does. One could argue that if we're delegating our duties to P D C, now we've subject, they're sort of operating as an arm of the county, and now they are subject to sunshine law and public records.
Well, that, that's correct. And as, as you're aware, in the E D C agreement as it exists today, requires, you know, public disclosure, auditing, and sunshine compliance.
Yeah.
Right. I, some of these delegations in the comp plan are fairly broad. So I just wanna make sure that somebody has thought carefully that you're gonna comply with sunshine law and public records for everything that's in, or the E D O is specifically named in the comp plan.
I think, I think you're touching on something that is gonna be really apparent throughout this, and that is that the devil's in the details of the agreements. That almost everything in here that normally would have been specifically talking about who's going to do what is in an agreement separate of the comprehensive plan. So you may end up with us having a three-year agreement, and in that agreement, you're gonna specify which of those items will be subject to sunshine law or, or we'll be doing things that aren't part of the county as well.
For the ones that say Pasco County and E D O, I agree with you. You'd have to look at the separate agreement to determine the extent of that delegation. I'm more concerned about the ones that sound like it's just the E D O. Okay, and I'll give you an example of one point one point three. Says the Pasco E D O will actively develop and implement programs to promote a diversified economy for Pasco County, through attraction and retention of primary and target industries, creation of public partner partnerships, and the education of committee on the value of economic development. That doesn't say the county and E D O, but that one just says the E D O will do that. So arguably, all of those duties, that's a, it's a fairly broad delegation to the E D O to do all of those things. Doesn't say that both of us are gonna do it. So arguably, that means that we've delegated that duty entirely to the E D O.
Yeah. And that's, that's where your previous plan was written as well, too.
I understand, but we've had this discussion, and you weren't at everyone. Just because something's in the plan today doesn't mean we can keep it that way.
That's right, I understand.
We're redoing the plan. So let's come up with the way this should be worded today. So my question is, should some of these statements where it's entirely a delegation to the E D O be changed to the county and E D O? Or just?
How about the county and county designated E D O?
Well, I, I don't know. I'm, and again, I don't know the details of every one of your.
Right.
I already did the league review of some of them, but I don't know every single part of your business relationship with each other. My only slight concern is that if it's entirely a delegation to the E D O in the comp plan, I'm not sure that overrides any, some side agreement.
Being entirely delegated to the E D O is, is what we want to be able to be that five oh one C three. Because if we're not entirely delegated to do some of those activities, we're no longer eligible to be a public-serving C three.
As long as you're comfortable that you're gonna comply with sunshine law and public records for that entire delegation.
Yep.
And some of these are fairly broad.
Yep.
I can live with it, but I just wanted you to make sure you're understanding the implications. There's pros and cons to getting that delegation.
Absolutely.
The con is now you're subject to sunshine law and public records.
Sunshine law that still, as a C three, has to come through you first in request, to request of us.
I understand that the public records comes through us. I'm not saying, but, but you're still gonna have to.
That's all right. We do that already.
Okay.
Appreciate the concern, though.
All right. So with that overarching concern, I guess now we can go to line by line questions. But I'm sure Mr. Moody, I have a couple, but I'm sure Mr. Moody has a few and others probably.
I just have a comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, so I just wanted to, I mean, there's no changes. I'm, I, but I just wanna emphasize one point seven and workforce education. And so there was a slide up a minute ago, if you can go back to that. There we go.
Yeah.
So at the very bottom, it talks about expand learning and certification opportunities for skilled trades. Talks about automotive, construction, electrical, and then support programs for high school students which provide work studies and apprenticeships. So we're, you know, extremely excited that in recent years, the school district, we now have a technical high school on the west side, Wendell Cran. We have a technical high school on the east side, Kirkland Ranch Academy of Innovation. We also have the Angelene Academy, which is right near the Sphero's campus. And so all those do a lot of those kind of trades. So we have certification opportunities in cybersecurity, and lots of medical, in construction, in automotive, in diesel mechanics, in welding, all of those kind of things. And so I think we're, we're, you know, it's so important for us to work with both the county and Bill Cronin's team to make sure that we're doing those kind of opportunities for our students who then can go directly into jobs, well-paying jobs, or they can pursue higher education, whatever they want to do. And so that provides those opportunities. In addition, I don't know if you've heard, but we're excited that there's a. In addition, I don't know if you've heard, but we're excited that there's a Bloomberg grant in partnership with Adven Health that we're working with and significant Bloomberg grant. And so we're even now actively working with Pasco High to have some medical academies at the high school that they, they too can then, once they have those certifications, can either go directly into the workforce or pursue other education opportunities at higher institutions. So again, that's really important. And, you know, it's a broad coordination, which is great. I just wanted to emphasize that and appreciate the partnership with the county and, and Mr. Cronin.
They're doing some amazing things at Angeline.
They are. Absolutely.
I was trying to figure out how to get enrolled there.
Right. And if you go.
You accepted them.
And if you get an opportunity to go over to Kirkland Ranch and look at the, the welding shop that they have and the diesel mechanics and all those kinds of things.
Yeah, I can tell you firsthand that the impact bringing him off a doctor in Angeline has on a, my student, one of the students there. And I can, I can tell you the formative impact it has on them. So great job on that.
I'll, I'll add also, I think, two of the big changes of this plan, of this chapter are the inclusion of a focus on workforce and workforce training programs, but also entrepreneurship. So historically, our focus had always been on just recruit, recruit, recruit. Making sure that we put our best, best place forward, best foot forward in terms of trying to attract other companies here. One of the best things we can do to attract other companies is how we treat our existing business, how we treat our workforce. And now when companies call and they say, hey, we're interested in Pasco, if the first thing they're not asking isn't about our talent, we're probably not interested. If they're asking first about incentives, that's not the company that we're looking to, to bring here. When they see this published in your actual comprehensive plan, that you have a focus on entrepreneurship, in other words, growing our own. They know that we're trying to create soil conditions that will grow talent, will grow new business, will grow new innovation. Because we can't just recruit our way into success. We have to grow what we have here too. So that's one of the, the two biggest points, I think, are the change in this document is that economic development is no longer just recruit, recruit, recruit. Although the media wants you to believe that, because that's all they, they, they never publish that one of our companies hired three jobs. They only publish the hundred job company or things like that. But the reality is 80% of our work is with existing business here, which are our small mom and pops.
Mr. Moody's in, oh, go ahead.
Oh, just got to say, just while we're on that section, I was just curious about the, just a very clerical thing, just about the numbering. On it, because it looks like tourism business development is still there under 1.7. I don't know if it should be maybe 1.8. Cause it looks like you go from training workforce development, training to tourism, which is kind of two separate subjects. So just a clerical minor thing, just wanted to point that out.
She was just one pointed on my document.
You were looking at objective add?
So I'm looking at the one you sent, so.
Add 1.7. So objective add 1.7 is now objective works 1.8. So.
Okay. Yeah. So I'm looking at the document you sent. So it must've been an old document then. I'm looking at the.
Are you looking at page 14 or 15?
I'm on the clean version.
Oh, so the clean version is nine, eight of 10? Page eight of 10?
Uh, it's page eight. It starts at page eight of 10, yeah, tourism business development. It says it's under policy works 1.7.3. Tourism business development.
There shouldn't be a 1.7.3. Yeah. You don't have it?
It's the file she emailed or the.
In the, in the series of attachments that were sent, the, the link to download the clean version in that download is what he's talking about.
Has 1.7.3?
Yeah. 1.7.1 is workforce training, 1.7.2 state and local training, 1.7.3 is tourism business development.
Okay.
1.7.4 is tourism marketing. Somehow something got mixed up in the conversion from the red line to the clean version.
Okay. So the clean version.
In the red line, it's correct.
That's correct.
The, the red line is still good. Okay. All right.
I'll go back to the red line.
But your clean version is six.
Yeah. Maybe it accepted changes?
Probably. I'm not sure. Yeah. These things happen with so many changes. I apologize. But if you look at the strike through and underline, objective works 1.8 is the, that's where we start the tourism business development.
I'll go back to.
So there should not be any 1.7.3. I apologize about that.
Yeah. So you had already caught what I was saying, basically.
I'm, I'm sorry. I was, I was confused.
Can I ask a?
You don't, you do not want to know that.
Did you get your substantive point? Or I'm not sure if you had one there. I don't know. I, I don't want to interrupt you. So if you've got more to say, go ahead.
No, no, that was, that was, just while we were on that section, I wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Right. Derek?
Policy 1.5.1. And, and I don't have an issue with you sort of expanding the key locations for employment. My comment or concern is the deletion of the word and infrastructure. So can you explain why we now only want to prioritize land use planning for these areas and not infrastructure planning?
This was a comment that we got from Elizabeth. She said that if we have infrastructure in there, it sounds like we are going to be paying for all of the infrastructure. Morgan, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, that's it. So that's why we removed and infrastructure.
Well, I mean, okay, but. Now there's another policy, I guess this somewhat relates to, there's another policy that talk, 1.5.6 that says we'll continue to coordinate with DOT, MPO and local governments to improve access to office, industrial employment, center locations. Arguably, that covers the, the transportation part of the infrastructure. But the other thing that, and David Engel and Mr. Cronin will tell you this as well, utilities are important as well. So it seems like we now, because we struck infrastructure from 1.5.1 and 1.5.6 only deals with transportation, like there's no longer a policy that says we're going to strive to get utilities to these employment sites, these key locations.
Would, would a solution be to identify as public infrastructure, publicly funded infrastructure? So that you don't end up stepping into something that perhaps is on private land, for example?
Yeah, I mean, I.
We're going to have eventually.
I'm not sure I share Elizabeth's concern with, with leaving infrastructure in, because it says we'll prioritize infra, I mean, infrastructure could be publicly or privately funded.
Right.
It doesn't say that we're going to fund it all. It just says that we'll prioritize infrastructure for these locations. I guess my overall concern is that just having land without good road and utility access is not going to help us.
Yeah.
So, so it seems like we somehow lost any statement that we're going to prioritize or road and utility improvements to serve these areas.
I, I, I think, and Morgan's here, but I think the, uh, the thought was to make sure that they were protecting the county so that we weren't setting a precedent where all infrastructure was going to be required by the county to actually fund and pay for.
Right. But I guess I don't read Pasco Council prioritize land use and infrastructure planning as meaning that.
Funding.
That we're going to write the check. I mean, a lot of our infrastructure is funded by private development. Sometimes for credits, I mean, we, we do, we do all kinds of infrastructure deals. I mean, we're dealing with this issue right now with central Pasco Employment Village. Where we planned for an employment location, didn't necessarily plan for having adequate utilities. So now it's not hurting the Amazon one, but it could be hurting other locations in Central Pasco Employment Village. So I guess my question is, can we put infrastructure back in or?
Does, does that also help you in the future as far as creating easements in? I mean, hate to say it, if you ever had to do eminent domain or something like that to be able to have that outlined in that.
We don't need this policy for eminent domain purposes, because we can, we condemn land for basically almost any public purpose. I'm not, that's not my concern. My concern is that if our goal is economic development, I don't think that just putting, setting land locations aside is sufficient.
I'm, I agree. I agree. So we're wording it public infrastructure? Because again, we're, if we look, this is a document that's going to be 20 years from now. We may be talking about airspace for drone taxis and things like that, that, that aren't, no pun intended, on our radar screen right now. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not saying that, that, but the status quo today is that most employers need utilities and road access.
I, I think what we, what we might consider doing is adding policy works 1.5.7, which talks about, which could talk about, because it's not there today, which could talk about public infrastructure and utility coordination. And so it would match the type of language that you have in 1.5.6, but specifically focus on the things that, you know, that we're talking about here.
Yeah. If there was a, if there was a companion policy for 1.5.6 that dealt with utilities, I don't think I would have raised this concern.
Okay. We, we can add that and that way it can encourage that kind of coordination.
This very thing did not occur with Central Pasco Employment Village. Nobody coordinated the provision of utility. We had the same problem on 456, where we built a road and then nobody coordinated it having utility access. So there is a severe lack of coordination with our utility department on serving employment sites today that needs to be fixed. So that was my concern is now, the one policy I would have relied on to say we need to do it, it was struck. So if you're going to add in a 1.5.7 that is going to deal with utilities, then I think that would address the concern.
Okay. We could do that.
Okay. I had one more question. This is probably more, well, actually I had two more. 1.6.2. So there's a statement there that says, and we all love the word insurer. Okay. But I thought you guys were going to get rid of the word insurer, but we'll, we'll get past that. But my bigger concern is it says Pasco County shall ensure that development, infill activities and redevelopment in this corridor adheres to the harbors redevelopment plan. So.
As updated.
As updated. So you're effectively making that plan a regulatory document, in my opinion, with this statement. So my concern with that is, again, I feel like we're basically regulating through the complan again. And even worse, you're regulating through a, a plan that isn't even before us. It's not even, you know, part of the complan. So I'm not even sure if anybody knows what that means. I mean, if it said something like, you know, that we'll, we're going to seek to implement land development regulations that, you know, in the future, we're going to do some land development regulations to implement that plan in that area. Don't have an issue with that. Because then the details of what you're going to take out of the plan and regulate with would be in land development regulation. The way it's worded right now, I, you're basically just saying any development in this area has to comply with the plan. With no chances for deviations, no chances for varying, I mean, it's just a blanket statement that it's all going to comply with that plan. So if you could rephrase this to be, you're going to develop land development regulations to implement that plan, I don't think I would, would have a concern with it.
Without spelling out the actual plan itself?
Well, the, the problem now is that, I don't know what, is it the entire plan?
Right.
I mean, I, I don't, is, are you really going to make Patrick Dutter, you know? I mean, he's got a site plan in that area. He's got to review the entire harbors redevelopment plan and determine whether it's consistent with that? I doubt that was your intent, but that's how it reads.
I believe you have some overlap too with the other municipalities there too, that we wouldn't be able to control.
But this is why you do, this is why the best way to handle is through land development regulation where you, you determine what parts of that plan you're going to actually make regulatory. And you coordinate with the cities when you do that. You coordinate with, you know, you have a thoughtful approach to what's going to be regulatory in that plan.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's a good point. So we could say it's something to the effect of Pasco County shall develop the land development regulations that promote development, infill activities and redevelopment in this corridor pursuant to the harbors redevelopment.
Yes. You're going to work on some land development regulations to implement that plan. I mean, I get your goal. You're, I guess you're sort of tired of that plan just sort of sitting on a shelf and nobody doing anything with it. I don't disagree with the goal, but you should then, it seems to me to be lazy to say we're just going to incorporate the entire plan and, and now it's regulatory. We're not going to even look to see what.
Yeah. I think that was the intent. It just needed to be fully fleshed out.
Okay. Um, and then my last question, but before I'll turn it back over to others who want to ask questions is 1.5.3. So previously, and I support the general policy that we want to limit conversions of important employment locations. Previously it said EC, IH, NIL. Now it says employment generating and future land use categories. I guess my question is really, what is the intent? Is com, like, do you consider com to be something that we would want to limit conversions of? ROR? I mean, I, I don't know what, I don't know what, when it says employment generating, I don't know what. Arguably, anything that is not residential is employment generating. So I don't, but I don't know what your intent here is.
I think the intent here is to broaden. I mean, in the, in the past couple of years, we have been very conservative and cautious even on the conversion of com or ROR properties to residential. Because they do provide some employment generating economic development, but not some significant economic development potential to the county. And so we don't want to lose the limited corridor capacity.
Again, I don't want to, I don't want to step on your toes about the policy issue. That's up to you all to decide. But the language is not clear to me, because there's other places when you describe employment generating, you describe it as target industry, office and industrial. There's other policies we use specifically such as target industry, office, industrial. You didn't do that in this one. So now I'm not sure whether, I don't want to drop to another cent, but 1.8 where nobody knows what it means. Okay. So, so I want you to be clear.
Yeah.
If that means even retail land uses, then come out and say it. Don't, don't leave it ambiguous.
So, so go back to a listing of the future land uses that we want to make sure that.
Yeah. I think you need to be clear what, or what, or what development types you're talking about. If you, if that means office, industrial, you know, retail, whatever, whatever you think it is that you're trying to preserve.
Yeah.
Be specific.
Yeah. It's really, especially in the comprehensive plan amendment stage of a project, it's really hard to discern whether the ROR is going to generate a retail enterprise for you, whether the ROR is actually going to generate a target primary business. So that's kind of where we were coming from, but I think, um, I think we can go back to a listing of the future land use, the actual categories themselves, rather than just being generic like we are in this policy.
I suspect somebody did this because there's, like, there's PDs that, where there's PDs where not the entire thing is employment generating. I get that. I understand the generic statement, why you did it, but I'm not sure you have to list these specific flus. What I'm saying is that maybe list the sort of generic. I think most people know when you say commercial retail, what that means, or office what that means, or industrial what that means. I, I don't know that you can use the more generic statements. I just want you to be clear what it is that you're trying to preserve. If that includes retail, I'm okay with it. I just, but it wasn't clear to me.
Okay. We can expound. We'll fix it.
Well, and the corollary to that is that there's other policies where like, for example, look at 1.5.1. And that one talks about, it says development, employment, general uses. And that one talks about, it says development employment generating uses such as target business, office, development, industrial. So if you're also trying to keep those locations for. Retail, I, I don't know whether you are or not, then, I mean. Then maybe it needs to be in the list. I, I don't, but maybe you're not at those locations. What, my biggest concern is that I think if, when you guys, because retail is an employment generating use. It may not be as high paying, but it still generates employees. So. I just want you to be clear when you're talking about preserving these sites, do you or do you not mean retail?
Could you say something like such as but not limited to?
Well. No, but, but, okay, the reason this comes up to us in reality though, is we do get requests for developers to convert. I mean, office industrial is sort of the no brainer ones. I mean, that's always been embedded in our comp plan. But we do get requests for developers to convert retail sites to residential. It's not uncommon and it occurs quite frequently. So. I don't, my concern with about saying such as but not limited to is I still don't know whether that we're trying to protect retail or not. Yes. All I'm saying is if you all are intending to protect retail at these locations or any locations, come out and say it. Don't just hide it.
I, I, I think in one five one, the, the thrust of one five one is that key employment locations which are listed. And then the, the emphasis in one five three is a general. Guidance that countywide, we wanna be cautious in how we are approaching the conversion of. Of what we're generically, in the way the current policy is written, what we're generically calling employment generating areas.
Okay, so I think, so then what, so you're saying that for one point five point one. The intent is really on target businesses, office and industrial at those key locations.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the roads.
Maybe you shouldn't say such as. I mean, maybe you should just say.
At, or no?
Target businesses.
It said, it should just say for development of target businesses. Office development, industrial development. Like, if you don't, if you did not intend to include retail on one point five point one, then don't use such as.
Yeah, okay.
And then in one point five point three, if your intent is to include retail on that one, then come out and say it.
What about supporting retail?
Well.
Sometimes we do need, you know, some of these sites, we actually do need some retail to make the site work. But it's usually supporting retail so that people don't have to go get a, don't have to drive to go get a sandwich at lunchtime, for example.
Yeah, I, if you maybe put supporting retail up in one point five point one.
And I think we were, we're definitely along, tracking along the same thought there because when we, when we reference employment generating future land uses, those future land uses do have. Built in supporting retail capability.
Yeah, if.
But what we could potentially do in one five three is further articulate. The conversions that we need to be paying attention to. So like, obviously industrial to residential would be a no-no. But you, you have a high level of scrutiny when you're looking at an industrial piece of property and whether or not it makes sense to convert it down to commercial. Or convert it down to residential. Then you have a, a, a different level of sense or sense of scrutiny when you're looking at a commercial property and whether that should be downed. To a residential, right? You could articulate that.
Yeah.
And therefore, thereby illustrate the limitations that we should have on these conversions.
Yeah, so my overall concern is that in one, one point five point one and one point five three are the two policies that get cited the most when we're trying to limit a conversion of a. Employment generating use. So I think you need to be as clear as possible about what uses you don't want converted.
Okay, we'll, we'll go back and work on that then. Clear that up.
That was all I had, Mr. Chair. I don't know if others have other stuff?
John?
Yeah.
Just a quick question about the two definitions of primary industry and target industry.
Sure. So, in, in lots of times we hear them used almost sounds interchangeably, but they're not. So primary industry is a business that sells fifty one percent or more. Of its product outside our boundaries, in the case of Pasco County, would be our county boundaries. And that can be either revenue or product that's going outside.
So the question has more to do with what's excluded. And specifically excluding all retail activities, utilities, mining or other extraction or processing businesses and activities regulated by the Division of Hotels and Restaurants. Or the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. So the question that I have is. K P W or Deloitte wants to put their world headquarters in Pasco County.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't accounting regulated by the Department of Business and Professional Regulation?
Yeah, they would come in under office though. It would not be their actual activity that we would be regulating and they're. They're typically not gonna be somebody that, that builds their own, they're gonna actually lease the space, so.
Well, they may or they may not. But I guess the question that I'm trying to get at is what are you trying to say when you say, well, activities regulated by the Division of Hotels and Restaurants and Department of Business? I'm thinking of Bechtel, same thing. Bechtel wants to come and put its world headquarters, move out of San Francisco and come to Pasco County. Right, its engineers and contractors are regulated by the D B P R?
But they're, they're covered under target, the description of target, even though they, they're both. Primary and target, but in this case, target is the benefit that they would be looking at, which is a stronger. Benefit, it makes them eligible for incentives and things like that.
So what, what is it that you're trying to say when you say excluding activities regulated by Division?
I think, and this isn't me trying to say it, this is an industry vernacular that's used, but it, it's actually talking about not recirculating. Money within the county, so that somebody who is just here to actually prey on other people's money. I E. A barber shop. Barber shop is not bringing in outside money outside of the county. The Department of Regulations that, that you're referring to is a licensing agency for barber shops. So. That's the type of industry that they're referring to here, not world headquarters, which would fall under a headquarters or a, a high impact.
I'd ask that you rethink that, and I understand that.
That's, it's not, it's not up to me to rethink, that's a, that's an industry, that's an industry standard.
Who's industry?
That'd be the International Economic Development Council of.
Well, okay, I'll give you a little story. So years ago I did a Walgreens store in Atlanta.
Mm-hmm.
And. Where I, where we wanted to put the store was occupied by a hair salon.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not gonna name that salon. But I'll just say that people from all over the world. Came to visit that particular hair salon and pay a thousand dollars or more to have their haircut. They weren't there to quote. Prey on the local population. They actually attracted people, stars and celebrities. So I'm not sure that really makes a good example.
I'm not sure there are one-off warrants changing everything that's out there in the United States for, for that. I mean, and quite honestly, this is an industry term that's used. It's not something that we made up. It's a. Fifty one percent or more and the state recognizes that as well. And the whole idea is not to, to get focused on the licensing of the type of business. It's whether or not the money's coming in or going out of the county.
I understand that. What I'm trying to get at is can the verbiage of the definition be made more clear? I understand what you're trying to say, but when I read that, I. I get, like I said, that, to me, that somebody like Bechtel or Deloitte, you could say, well, you're regulated by. Division of, you're, I'm sorry, D B P R, so you're not, you don't qualify as our primary industry.
But they qualify as a target industry. So, so it's, it's not come up.
Language is in that definition as well.
No, it's a, it is a targeted industry because it's in one of the target industry clusters that's identified each year. The six. That we have now includes office and business. And it also at the state level includes the high-impact performance industry. Hippie, they call it, but that is for headquarters. I think the, the main thing, and if a company gets down to that level of looking at. Whether or not they're considered a primary to get some of the benefit that's in here, they're already gonna get the benefit. Because of their target industry. So this is, we've never had somebody say, we're not coming because. Of this licensing requirement, because you don't consider us a primary industry. This is more to make sure that your retail industry isn't being treated as the one that's creating the most revenue, the most tax base. For your county.
How do we classify, say, Amazon?
Amazon actually sells more outside of the county.
Are they, they're a retail business?
That's, and that is a national subject of controversy. It is one, we didn't give them incentives though either.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
We didn't give them incentives, John.
Ambiguity in the definitions.
They're not eligible for incentives. So there is no, that is, that is not an accurate example. We did not give Amazon any incentives.
I'm not suggesting anybody should or shouldn't get incentives.
Though that's what, why these are, that's why these languages here, to determine whether or not they get incentives or this benefit of these, these land regulations.
So you wouldn't go out and recruit Amazon?
No. No, as a matter of fact, when they came looking, we told them, if you're gonna bring something, you bring us the good stuff, hence the robotic center. But if you look at all of the door-to-door delivery, I recruited two large Amazon facilities in South Carolina back when they used to take incentives. They have to be in a certain geography. There is no but for that is required. So there is no, if it wasn't for incentives, them locating here. Doesn't stand. They have to be within a certain drive time. You don't have to give them anything.
I'm not suggesting we should give anybody anything. I'm just asking you to clarify what you mean. What do you mean by processing?
How about if we just pointed to where that definition comes from? And that way they know it's the same one that the rest of the United States uses.
You know, I'm gonna say something about this process. We come down here to vet and discuss what's going in our comprehensive plan. And I've now sat through hours and hours and hours of these workshops. Where I watch the staff defend this as if this is their damn religion. You, you do. Don't shake your head at me, no, because you do. You stand up here and there's way too much pride of authorship. In all of this nonsense. We're here to discuss this. We represent a community. You're employees of the local government.
John?
We are representatives of our community. We may be appointed representatives, I understand, we're not elected representatives. But we're here to represent that and discuss that. And I think there's way too much pride of authorship. I asked a question. I'm not saying we can't have this definition, I'm trying to understand the definition.
John, let me, let me interject, please.
Eliminate what I consider to be, or I think is an ambiguity. And what I'm getting is I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't.
No, you're not, you're not, because guess what? I am not an employee of the county. They are. They've asked me to come and help them with this because of the, excuse me, because of what is the normal best practices in economic development. We're one of sixty seven accredited agencies out of over sixteen thousand. This is the normal business practice. I'm here to help them. I take great, great exception with you telling me. That I am treating something as the Bible. I was asked here to come here to help.
Well, you're telling me that you have no flexibility in this definition.
No, that's a staff decision, not mine.
Bill, I guess, go back to, till we can stop the back and forth here. I mean, you suggested, or I heard you suggest, maybe. We refer back to the industry standard reference in the definition. Rather than outlining and spelling it out here. I mean, is that a viable alternative?
That's what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think really, we're just trying to get, because I.
Trying to provide a solution, I'm not sure what you're trying to get at.
Reading through the, the definitions here, this looks like, maybe this is how I interpret it, but it looks like when we spell out definitions here. This is just the definition as it refers back to the code period and, and so it kind of lends to, and there's nothing here the way it's written that says.
Statute or something, or I get it.
There, there's nothing here that says that.
It's in the glossary.
This is our.
This is a proposed definition for the glossary.
Because you have to approve this document. If you wanna put something else that's counter to what the industry standard is, that's your prerogative.
I'm only asking about, I haven't argued about the definition. I'm asking about the definition to understand the definition. And what, again, I'm getting this over defensive reaction over what it is. I'm trying to understand it. I'm asking questions so that I understand what is or is not included in private industry and target industry. You've now explained that Amazon is not a, a target or primary industry. Okay, now I understand that. If there's some, and I agree with Jamie, if there's some industry standard you want to cite. Or there's some state statute that you wanna cite, okay, then let's state, let's state that. Otherwise, I have no idea where this came from and it.
So how do you handle any exceptions to that standard? So, you know, maybe there is an exception to that particular standard that you wanna provide an incentive to.
Yeah, I think an exception might be, for example, research, so a research facility.
Right.
Coming in that may initially look like a doctor's office or a hospital. But if you look at the R and D aspect of it, then it qualifies as one of the target industries, not as a primary industry. Another one might be something that wouldn't be an exception, although sells more than fifty one percent outside the county. And that's auto dealers. Auto dealers are something that they come here because of populations here, because of buying powers here. We're not gonna treat them like a primary industry.
Right. I'm, I'm just saying if, you know, if something comes up in the future that maybe might be an exception to that. Very specific definition that is written in stone. That's, I think that's kind of.
What's it mean, processing? What's a processing business? What does that mean?
Where, where are you reading them?
I'm reading this in the, in the, in the definitions, the proposed definitions for primary industry and target industry.
Oh, yeah, so that's, that's, that's anything that is using things from out of our earth. So think of things like mining. Think of brick making, think of the things that requires them to be here because we have that item here. This goes back to soap rendering and things like that.
When I say processing, I'm thinking of. They're not here anymore, but likes brothers.
Yeah, likes Pasco.
I produce meat and I sold it all over the country. I processed that meat. Is that not a industry that we would have? If I had. I'm trying to think of the big Brazilian company, J B, whatever.
Yeah, Baduca is an example, yeah. They are a primary industry. It's exact, very similar.
So I think the definition, I think his issue is the definition specifically excludes that. It's very black and white, there's no way around it. And that's why I was wondering how you would handle an exception, because that might be the example of an exception. So, you know, the, the definition doesn't allow an exception. It doesn't say.
Uh, I see where you're.
Has, you know, except in rare exceptions.
So if you, if you look at the.
I think he has one, he has an idea in his head of what process, and I understood what you meant about, okay, you need to come here and mine sand and rock to make. Concrete blocks, that's, we don't, that's not what we're looking for. But in the case of, I'm going to bring cattle from all over the state and I'm gonna process to ship this out all over the world.
It's referring to the mining, no, that processing piece, if you look dramatically at this, the way that's written is referring to mining and extractions. That's, it's, it's not or processing, it's and processing. So it's talking specifically about mining and extraction. So that maybe where the confusion is.
Bill, can I ask this question in a slightly different way? Does the state maintain a list of primary and target industry?
Yes, yes.
Can we just refer to that list? Is there some problem with referring to that list?
Um, yeah, some of the targets change. So targets statewide may not always be our targets. So, for example. Distribution is something that we probably have too much of. And we're probably gonna look at not making that a target industry because it doesn't have good paying jobs and does not bring the, uses some of our best land in there. But the state has a much more inclusive list of targets.
Does P D C have a published list that sort of modifies the state list?
Yes, every year it's published. It's part of our M O U with the county.
We should refer to that published list instead of. Trying to define it with words and you're telling me that, that a lot of thought went into the state list as modified for our locality.
Yes.
Why not just refer to that list?
We do, I think, earlier in, in the document, this is just the glossary piece describing what a target industry is.
But I, but if what you're telling me is it sort of changes over time. Maybe it's better to not embed it in the comp plan, because just by way of example, you mentioned distribution.
Yeah.
Distribution might technically fall in the comp plan definitely.
Distribution might technically fall in the comp plan definition, but your list now excludes it.
The way we had written it in previous was that it was the Pasco EDC's identified primary and target industry list. And, and we've scrubbed all of that in this.
Maybe we get rid of this fight over the language and exceptions to the language if we just refer to that list, the most recent version of that list.
That's, and that's what it was written before. If we, if we, do we have a copy?
So do we need the definitions in here then?
Are you, are you saying to add that list to the definition?
I'm saying get rid of the definitions and just go with the.
Just refer to the list.
Refer to the PDC's published list.
Somebody could say, we're not on the list, but we fit that definition and then.
You get a fight, yeah.
Yeah.
And in this case, it would be EDO's list rather than the EDC's list.
The advantage of being in PDC's list is if the board and PDC both agree that there's something needs to be added or subtracted from that list, like distribution.
Based on current market.
Based on current market conditions, we can do that without having to go back and fix some definition in the comp plan.
I, I think it just got scrubbed because it said Pasco EDC previously.
Well, then say EDO. Say the latest EDO's published list.
Okay. Because that is part of our contract with the county.
Does that fix your concern?
Well, I have another concern, but I'll save that for a discussion with Mr. Engel. I'll just say this, some of the statements that just got made are pretty dangerous to a fairly large employer you and I are trying to secure a location for.
Okay, well. John, did you have anything other section?
Put aside that specific situation. I'm just trying to see, the concern about the definition, does that go away if we refer to the latest list instead?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the definition. If you can include a list, great.
Well, I think what Bill is saying is that his list, this, this definition informs how they create the lists.
What would you call that list?
Target industry list and primary industry list.
Do you have a separate list for primary and separate for target? Or are these two different lists?
No, primary doesn't get into the, the granular names of each of them. It actually does more to identify what's not considered primary.
How's that list developed, Bill? So you refer to the state list and you deal with these, how do you, how was that kind of whittled down to?
Yeah, it's whittled down based on things like our education, our talent pipeline. For example, we've got tons of aviation students coming through programs at Sunlake, Zephyr Hills, the, the career tech centers, but we hardly have any aviation businesses. So in that case, we're looking to actually recruit more aviation businesses to make sure that that talent isn't just leaving us and, and doing a brain drain out of the community. Things like distribution I mentioned before, looking at land use. Looking at land use and the return on capital. You take the, the target distribution center, their average wage actually would have lowered our county average wage at the rate that they were looking to come in. So they didn't get any incentives from us either. Those, now whether or not they still come, that's up to you guys when it comes to if they're trying to do something that's outside of the zoning or the land use. But as far as if there's somebody that's actually going to pursue them, that's when they're a target or not. So if they're not a target, that doesn't prevent them from coming. That may just prevent them from getting any type of incentive.
Well, it also, even if something like the target distribution center, there's still a light industrial use. So they're still going to get the benefit of the planning, things we talked about earlier, about trying to preserve those uses and infrastructure for those uses and things like that. They're just not getting the monetary incentives.
Exactly. The employer isn't, isn't eligible. Because for us, the majority of it comes down to the employer. It's the person cutting the W twos. That's where we're putting our focus. Some of this is referring to developer type activities. Developers don't create the jobs. And we can't do deals with developers and expect that the jobs are automatically going to come. So anything that we're doing is focused on the person cutting the W two on a performance basis. So even if they come and say, we're going to create a thousand jobs at X number of dollars, it's performance based. So at the end of the year, if they don't get that, they're not getting the, the incentive.
Well, if this, these definitions are primarily used for incentive reasons, I think we should be referring to your lists.
And, and that's exactly why we have historically.
So that list is kind of vetted annually essentially with the, with the VACC?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This, both the state and, and Pasco EDC does this annually. It's part of our agreement.
Yeah, it's going to change a lot between now and 2050, so it's, there's targets. So you want to have something that's plastic enough to be able to move with the times. And I think, you know, when you spell it out in the comp plan like that, it makes it a lot more problematic to be able to pivot when you need to. So referring to that list might make a lot more sense as opposed to spelling it out.
Like, I think what, what becomes problematic is when you're looking at it from a developer standpoint, not knowing what the building is going to be used for in the future. We do have speculative development out there, and we can only guess what they're going to use it for, what they're going to market it for. But unless they're getting an incentive or anything that can actually have some teeth to it to restrict them from using it for certain things, they can still do what they want with it unless it's written in here initially that they can't do that. But the benefit, the concern about the vernacular used and the benefits they get for it are strictly around the programs that they're eligible for, especially incentives.
John, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Chris?
Um, I'm good.
I've just got a couple of just questions, more than anything. Policy one point three point one. I'm just trying to figure out what that says. The EDO network through local, state, regional, and national to grow existing businesses and identify, is there words missing there?
Uh, network is the, is the operative word. It's not the EDC network. Network is a verb, not a noun.
So EDO shall or EDO will?
Shall network would probably be better. You were, you were looking at it as if network was a noun, right?
I was like, who's doing what, where, when, why? And maybe this kind of gets tied back in the target industry incentive, but under one point four point three, the Economic Development Incentive Program. Going back to the data and analysis, there, there's sections in there about job creation incentives, and they're tied to certain wages. It looks like we've struck the, the percentage of average wage in this document. Was that on purpose? Does that no longer matter? Before you gave incentives to people, there were a hundred and fifteen percent of Pasco's average wage. It looks like all that's gone, unless it's referred to somewhere else that I don't see it. I saw it in the data analysis document, but I don't see it here in the, in the goals, objectives, and policies.
I suspect that they struck it because it's now in the codified ordinance, the incentive ordinance.
It is, it's under the JCI ordinance, ten point four.
There's a specific JCI ordinance that has all this.
Okay, so there's a separate document?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And, and I think historically as well, too, that was the only incentive that we had back in the day. So it was listed in here as the incentive. Now there's lots of different types of incentives that are available, but they still have to be eligible for that initial JCI incentive, the ten, uh, ten point oh four.
Okay. And under one point five point one, and I'm only asking this question because I know it's come up on several other times in employment commission meetings especially, but we specifically referenced those roadway corridors and we have the word railroad in there. Is there any importance or does it need to be mentioned about any private airports and the benefit that like private airports play in employment locations?
You think if we want to have a place to put all those aviation technology students to work, we might have, need an airport.
I, I think the answer to that is by the roads that are being identified. So we've called out Chansey Road, for example, around Zephyr Hills. Fifty-two is where Pilot Country is.
Okay.
Along the I seventy-five corridor is where Tampa Arrow is. Hidden Lake Airport is not one that we would probably bank on because it is a truly private airport, private use airport, I should say.
The, the only reason, Terry, that I, I raise a question is, I can make the same argument for railroads, I think. So railroad is spelled out. I didn't know if it was important to spell out railroads. Is it important to spell out airports? That's, that's all.
Um, we can. I don't think it hurts if we want to. I mean, but the, the only difference is that we probably wanted to find it as public use airports.
Right. Okay.
So we can, that's, that's not a, I don't think it's a harmful addition. So we can just be clear.
I'm sure there's lots of users that probably rule out Pasco County because of the ability for airports or location of airports. I just, you know, they do play an important role in a lot of industries, so.
Agreed.
That's a good, good point.
And then I think this is my last one, and this is just a one point six, the redevelopment and urban infill, subjective one point six. Promote and implement redevelopment and urban infill projects along key economic corridors. What, I mean, how is, I mean, do you have examples of how, like how this is done? Redevelopment?
I mean, so one, that's objective one point six. So you immediately followed by one six one. And then one six one is outlining the key corridors. That, I think the best example is the Harbors Redevelopment Plan and, and that planning effort that took place for US nineteen. There's supposed to be additional efforts for three oh one. We've added fifty-four from nineteen to forty-one and then fifty-two from nineteen to forty-one. We've also done, there has been over the last couple of decades, an attempt to plan out the Land O' Lakes Boulevard corridor as well. And then most recently, the, we did the Greater Lakucha Community Area Plan, which discussed a lot of different economic development objectives for the Trilby-Lakucha area in northeast Pasco. So I, I bring those as local examples.
Okay. That's, that's good. Good, good explanation. Okay. Anything else from anybody?
And, and I just want to point out that those were for redevelopment, right? So obviously, we, we want to develop in the right places in the county too, so it doesn't take away from any kind of objectives to plan from Suncoast to seventy-five between, along fifty-four. So.
Got you. Okay. Okay. Nothing else? Everybody good?
Just my usual, the word ensures in the introduction again.
I saw that.
Ensure. All right, well, thank you guys for coming, presenting. I think we're done. Nancy?
Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you, comment.
Mr. Chairman?
If you want to take public comment at the workshop, is it?
I don't know. We've got a lot of people here. It's going to take a while. I'm just kidding, Nancy. Go ahead, Nancy.
Hi. I believe it's one point six point one I was interested in. I went to the, with Lakucha meetings and made a point of the fact that people in Trilby didn't know they were included in it. I'd like to know.
Nancy, can you hold on one second? I'm sorry. I hate to interrupt you. Is there anything in this workshop, just need to give name and address or any of that kind of stuff?
I would still do her name and address, but she doesn't need to be small.
No.
You don't want to give your name?
Nancy Hayeswood, three, four, one, one, oh, a nice place. So what I'm asking for is a clarification of what the development and economic plan in Trilby is, since it's the northeast rural area plan. And those, I'm not sure those people had much say in that because they, like I said, they didn't know they were in that area. And I didn't catch up with that until after all the meetings were done. And if there were more meetings that maybe I missed and didn't see anything about? One point six point one, you mentioned that you were putting, what you were putting there?
Terry, it's one point six point one F. It says that you're going to prepare and update a redevelopment plan for the Greater Lakucha area, which it says in parentheses, Trilby-Lakucha and Tril-Lakucha.
I'll speak for Terry. So this is a land use plan that we're evolving at this time. Originally, we had a Trilby-Lakucha study done that was presented to the community. We had, there were a number of meetings and neighborhood meetings about it. And we, we tried to induce and attract redevelopment up in Lakucha. And we have southeast Culver, which is going to be constructing on the old Housing Authority property. We have reinforced earth, and we have other possibilities down the three oh one corridor to take advantage of the rail, the freight rail that's already there. Secondly, we are also trying to promote some redevelopment in Trilby to create a commercial neighborhood center for the surrounding area. So those are, I think that's the reference to that. An F.
Well, the way I read this policy is that it's, it's a plan that you're going to do in the future? Is that, or, or update the one that you already did?
It'll, it'll be an update, sir.
Okay, then presumably, any citizen engagement can occur as part of that update to that plan, correct?
That's correct, and it will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners as well at a, at a public meeting. We will be reaching out to the community. That's been the policy of this department since I've been here and even before, that we engage with the community on these area plans.
So, yeah, I mean, as long as you're going to be seeking citizen input when you do these plans, I don't know, I'm not sure if I understand the concern, but.
Um, I was wondering where.
Nancy, if you can just come up that way, this is for the clerk's purpose. I know, they're intimidating too.
Nancy Hayeswood, three, four, one, one, oh, a nice place. Where is the commercial neighborhood center that you're thinking about putting in there?
It, it would be in the internal part of historic Trilby. We haven't really finished defining that, but we will, we will be back to the neighborhood. Our idea is is we need some neighborhood support, like a food market and some of the things that people need in proximity to their homes rather than driving all the way for a half hour in either direction.
They have like at least two Dollar Generals that have food with them too, plus they've got the farm basket that has, have you been, have you, any of y'all been there? I recommend it. It's really pretty neat. And their sandwiches are great. But they've got fruits and vegetables there too. So being a rural area, I'm thinking that they've got the availability, plus there's still a bit further south, a grocery store down there too.
Well, you know, all part of an area study constitutes, the first thing you do is existing conditions, a land use plan. And also redevelopment doesn't have to be defining eligible uses in geographic areas. It's also branding the area consistent with the history and heritage of the Trilby area, which at one time was the largest city in Pasco County.
Yeah, unless Nancy's objecting to it being designated as a targeted redevelopment area, I'm not sure you're actually doing anything yet. This is just saying you're going to, you're targeting it as an area, we're going to do a plan. That's all truly saying.
It's a important area of interest for this part of the county.
And I believe that it was already designated as a urban infill redevelopment area. By the board?
Yeah, and it's technically that little node there, US three oh one and what's the Cross Street, five, seven, five, is it? Can't remember off the top of my head, but that area is actually part of the east market area. It's not part of the north market area specifically for those redevelopment purposes. If there's not any other questions regarding this chapter, I do have a quick update for the, for the local planning agency here.
Okay.
So at this point, we have reached the midpoint of the comprehensive plan update in the presentation of chapters. We've gone through five and a half chapters, the half being the partners chapter that we talked about last week, which there's still some portions of it that need to be brought forward and discussed. We're going to take a little bit of a break for a breather here, go back and compile all the changes that have been talked about here at the local planning agency on those five and a half chapters. In the meantime, we're going to continue working on the other chapters that are coming forward, which are grows and moves and serves, invests, the other half of partners. One thing to note is that Pasco specializes, there's, that's connected city and BOPH and those special planning areas, we're not going to be changing those. One thing to note is that Pasco specializes, that's Connected City and VOPH and those special planning areas. We're not going to be changing those. And then we'll be back again, probably, I think we're targeting October to resume our chapter discussions, although that's tentative at this point. Just depending on how quick we can get through some of this research and fixing in the different chapters. The other reason why we want to take a little bit of a break here is because we do have the American Planning Association Conference coming up here in mid-September. So that's going to slow us down a little bit with the comprehensive plan update as we keep pace with all the other work that we're doing plus going to the conference. So I just want to give that bit of news to the local planning agency and gather any feedback that you might have.
So Terry, I do have one question for you. No objection to a break, but your statement that you're not going to touch specializes. I don't know that I necessarily have an issue with that for VOPH because they have their own planning commission, basically. But if you recall, in Connected City, this body had some concerns with the way some of the policies and plans are currently for Connected City. This is the planning agency for Connected City.
Right.
So we're not going to fix any of those things?
We are. The difference is that right now, we're running through our financial plan assessment and VOPH, which is bleeding over and looking at Connected City as well. And we're also doing the mobility fee study at the same time. The answers that are going to be found out in those two studies are going to help influence Connected City, so we're going to be making updates to Connected City. It's just not going to be part of the comprehensive plan update specifically. Those will probably follow immediately in the aftermath of the comprehensive plan update. We'll be back into Connected City, making Connected City and VOPH specific updates, following the completion of those studies.
Well, okay, but my recollection is the issues with Connected City had more to do with land use form, types of permitted uses. There was the issue with the district park. I mean, I'm not sure that the update to the VOPH financial plan is necessarily going to implicate those issues.
No, they're not, but it's going to cause us to open the documents further. And so our thought process was let's just be comprehensive in the Connected City update and include all of that in that go. The comprehensive plan update is a huge effort, as you can probably tell by now, and I don't think we have the time to debate Connected City specifics during the comprehensive plan update when we're talking about all these other matters. So it's a strategic move to actually address Connected City.
Yeah, I guess what I was, there was really two issues that I recall being sort of the heartburn issues. One is that sort of clarifying basically your interpretation of what uses, what densities are allowed in Connected City. Meanwhile, are implementing something that the comp plan wasn't entirely clear, in my opinion, about how, what's allowed from a density perspective. And the second issue was is right now it says we're building a district park in Connected City, which we probably aren't. I mean, I understand there may be a park, but I don't think it's going to be a district park. So is it really that much work just to fix those two issues?
It can be, yes. Logistically, it's another type of document. It's not in the same format as the rest of the comprehensive plan. It's a document that was built by height design, and they have specific design features to the way the Connected City comprehensive plan is updated, written, rather. And to update that requires some graphic design capability, et cetera, et cetera. And that's why we'd rather address it all together in the one shot that we're going to take at Connected City and update it.
Okay, well, I don't know how long it's going to take. My underlying concern is we're going to continue to get rezonings in Connected City. They come before the planning commission, and those citizens may be making the same arguments in the interim. Are we really going to tell them we didn't update it because we didn't have graphic design capability? I mean, I.
I mean, my argument isn't really based on, necessarily based on the graphic design. There is some logistical challenges associated with dealing with that document, but it's mainly that we're dealing with, at the global scale of the county, there's a lot of information to contend with as it is. And so our hope was to just let's, if we have to address Connected City one way or another, which we do, let's all put it all together.
I realize the board may or may not have agreed with it, but this body actually made a motion to create a moratorium in Connected City until it got fixed. That's why, that's the source of my underlying concern here is we're doing this objective. I agree with everything you're saying, but this is, it's not normal for this body to say, I want a moratorium until you fix something. In fact, I don't think this body has ever done that. So it does seem a little weird that, okay, the one thing that caused this body to ask for a moratorium, we're not going to fix.
We are going to fix, but this is a much, much bigger project. So I just don't want to cross the wires because, as I said, there's a lot of content to deal with here just in the comprehensive plan in and of itself. But then to add the weight of a specific Connected City debate and inject that into this much larger effort that we've been carrying now for five years, here we are at the end of the road, so to speak. So the studies that I mentioned, the mobility fee, the financial plan assessments, those are finishing up now. And it is our plan to address those plans specifically, following up right behind the comprehensive plan update. So in some sense, it's a part two, if you will, of the comprehensive plan update. We'll get the overall document fixed. And then on the special documents, the sub-comprehensive plans, if you will, like VOPH and Connected City, we'll be looking at those right on the heels of this effort.
So the workshops, I think we have a couple workshops coming up scheduled, so I got no problem with the break either. I'm just curious, so I think we've got one next week scheduled that we're going to.
Yeah, we'll be reworking the schedule a little bit.
Okay, so we're going to take that.
And I don't think that one's been published yet, the next week's workshop, the schedule. We went ahead and reserved dates because it was easier just to hold the rooms like this, and then if we didn't need them, we could just pull the plug on it.
Yeah, I think we had, I think there's two schedules. There's one next Thursday, I think we got it on the 2nd of October.
So anything we don't need will just disappear from our calendars, basically?
Yeah, we'll scrub it and then reset for the next chapters. We'll probably also want to set a, like a review of the different changes, like I know partners, the board here wanted it to come back to them again, so we will do that review. On some of the other chapters, maybe like lives, maybe we'll just, if it's all right with you all, we could just circulate the updates to that and not necessarily have speaking time to it, but it's up to you. Lives in place. Those are the two that didn't have like heavy changes.
Yeah, I think the big thing is, and I think just, we've brought up a lot, and I know this board's probably taken a lot of time reviewing these things and probably only a small fraction of the amount of time you guys have invested in it, but it would be nice to see this stuff again before we just get hit with all 12 chapters or 11 chapters all at one time and ask for adoption or ask for approval or recommendation.
We'll work on these, call out the edits that were made based on the discussions that we had, and then keep rolling with them.
The other favor I would ask you to take a close look for the chapters that we have not gone through yet. Please scrub them again, determine when you're trying to regulate through the comp plan. I mean, because it seems like every time we get one, we're still finding ones where you're basically regulating through the comp plan. And we talked about the dangers of that, so.
Yeah, and a lot of that's going to be, certainly in some of the new language, there was that taking place, but there's also legacy language that we're going to have to scrub as well.
And ensure. All right. If there's nothing else to discuss, we'll adjourn the workshop. Do we need a motion? Just adjourn? Workshop's adjourned.
Just hit your gavel.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other dis-